All set? All right, I'm starting. Here we go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of February 19th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So, we've had some technical difficulties in the past in regards to broadcasting out to the greater public, and as far as I know, talking to full channel, I'm sorry, I-3 broadband, I was corrected by Mike Davis, we should be good to go. So, hopefully, this is live, and if it's not, I'll probably hear about it later. So, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
There's a motion and a second to approve? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is submission of the minutes of the meeting of January 29th, 2020. Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is advertised public hearing, and this is a consideration to amend the zone use map under zoning ordinance for change of zone map request for 500 Wood Street assesses plat 29 lot 1, including units 10, 21, and 30, for a change of zone from urban rehab LDP with conditions to urban rehab LDP with modified conditions. This is also the second reading for adoption, continued from January 8th. You have recommendation provided by the top, by, excuse me, by the Director of Community Development on behalf of the Planning Board.
Mr. Solicitor, I understand that this was requested for a continuance from the receiver. Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct. Requested that it be continued to the next council meeting, which is on March 11th.
Motion to continue to the March 11th Town Council meeting.
Second.
At 7:00 PM, please.
At 7:00 PM. You got it.
Why are you making that distinction, sir?
Well, because you're supposed to continue it to a date and time certain, and I just want to make sure no one's confused about when you're meeting, just to be particular.
Outstanding. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Do we have a second on that?
We don't have a second.
We had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
7:00 PM it is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is item C1, and this is the second reading for adoption of ordinance 2020-01, and this is an amendment to the town code concerning mobile food establishments, also known as food trucks.
So, this was a response from the town for a change in state law, which says that food trucks could kind of go wherever they wanted unless, and I'm being very vague about that, but unless the town took specific action in regards to zoning. We spent a lot of time on this. My colleagues and I had a couple of concerns. I'm going to address those to the solicitor. Things that have come up from my colleagues and myself, first, my colleagues, where we were concerned about the private venues, for example, the Mount Hope Farms, the Blythe Walts, those are a couple of examples of multiple, that they would be able to continue with their practice of having food trucks there for different venues, including weddings. There was a concern expressed about our fire department. They have had a food truck program, if you will, on Independence, was it Festival? I like Festival, then better than program. Down at Independence Park's been very successful, and this council was concerned that those things would happen unabated. Was there, did I skip anything of other concerns?
No.
I'm sorry. Fourth of July, there was also, there are some small but very important ice cream trucks and Dell's trucks. Talk to my kids, they'll tell you it's important. Particularly, the administrator brought to my attention that, I guess, they come down to the town common during the summer around 6:00 o'clock. So, part of our ordinance, the way it's written right now, would not allow that to happen, but we wanted to make some changes. So, Mr. Solicitor, I think I put that in a nice box. Could you convey what you found out?
Sure. I think, as you said, this is a reaction to state law that attempted to streamline the process, the ancient process of hawkers and peddlers license and have a uniform, food truck license, and created the creature called a mobile food establishment. But unfortunately, the pushcart for ice cream or lemonade and the truck that serves French food or pulled pork and whatnot, they're all the same thing. They're lumped together as mobile food establishments. The state law does provide that the town can regulate them in certain ways, including their locations, and so that's what we tried to do here. And essentially, kind of the overall key here was the idea that the ice cream trucks and the lemonade trucks, the people that don't stop for a while in one place, we're not really regulating them very much as to where they can go. They're fine in the residential neighborhoods, that's where they want to be, downtown as well, and so that's why we define this itinerant mobile food establishment as if they're not stopping for more than 10 minutes in any one place. And that 10 minutes isn't that we expect someone to be there with a stopwatch, but it gives us a mechanism if there are complaints, that we can, in fact, respond to them. And then beyond that, we also tried to be liberal with the, what were called events, if events are being held on private or public property. And then the only other thing we were trying to do is people who, if it wasn't an event, if it's just someone who's got a license, they're just driving through the town and picking up, we're regulating them as far as not allowing that in the residential areas so that they can't, you know, park in someone's front of someone's house in a residential area for two hours, running with their cooking and everything and serving crowds of people, and also not in the downtown heart because they'd be complete, beating with our brick and mortar restaurants there, who are paying their taxes and so forth at that point. So, that's the overall philosophical scheme, and then the problem is how do you translate that, which is kind of complicated, but I think we're, I think we're about there almost. So, I'm sorry, I don't know if I was a...
I just had a question on page three of the ordinance, and just speak to, maybe you already have, just want clarity for myself, the private events on private property, two per year per location. So, I just want you to just kind of take me through the scenario of that. If Blythe Walt has two events, can Mount Hope have events? How does this work?
Sure.
Before you do, could you point out which section you're speaking of?
I think you're talking about section 19-123, the table?
Yes.
Okay. And the table is also just meant to make it easier to see. I don't know if you want me just to run through, before I get into the specific stuff, let me just run through the changes that were made from the previous, from the first reading.
Excellent.
And then also one other one, and then deal with it. So, the first reading, the changes, section 19-122, there was talking about, it used to say disciplinary action, now says adverse action, and provides that the Town Council shall hear appeals of a denial, suspension, or revocation of a mobile food establishment permits. So, there's a process if there's that.
Great.
Then, in the table itself, 19-123, I'll use the sections because those of us who are using the technology, we don't have the page numbers here. The itinerant mobile food establishments, hours of operation, which had been 8 to 5:00 PM downtown and 8 to sunset general elsewhere, has, currently reads 8:00 AM to sunset for every place. It has been suggested and that that be actually just changed to 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That is a practical matter. In the middle of winter, they're not going to be out at 9:00 PM anyway, but it will be easier for enforcement and everybody if there's just the time, and sometimes there are people, like maybe an ice cream truck down at the Commons that 8:00, even if sunset's at 7:45 or something like that. So, that would be a proposed amendment tonight to just change that to 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM instead of 8:00 AM to sunset. The next one is the one that was just referenced.
Just go back for one second.
Yeah.
So, you'll be digging the downtown at 8:00 PM?
No.
No.
No, it's just going to be everywhere. It's going to say eight, it says now 8:00 to sunset everywhere. It would say...
The restrictions, like that column's still there, the other column.
The location restrictions, oh.
Yeah, I thought that that was like delete, like, I know that, because I brought this issue up before about the downtown at the last meeting.
Right.
Okay, so that would, yes, that should be deleted completely.
So, proposed change would be 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM everywhere.
Under hours of operation and location restrictions would not apply at all. There wouldn't be any location restrictions.
Would it just say none?
There'd be none, yes, it would.
Okay.
So, thank you. I missed that. So, the next item, MFE, private events on private property, this, and this was going, I think, to Mr. Sweeney's question, instead of saying no more than two times per year per location, we've added in residential zones. There is no cap in other zones.
Okay.
So, that, the events, Blythe Walt, Mount Hope Farm, they're not in residential zones. They're in HBC zones.
Great.
It's just, if you're in a residence, the idea is to allow people to have events at their home even. You have a birthday party, you have a wedding, you want to have food trucks, so forth, but you shouldn't be having a wedding every weekend with food trucks and things like that. We're trying to restrict it there. So, the two times a year is what we have generally used as a rule of thumb in enforcement in general. If, you know, what changes from someone having it as an accessory use to their property to having it as a principal use, that's the rule of thumb that we've used, so we thought we'd keep this the same for the food trucks.
Thank you.
The next item is MFE, private event on public property, and this was changed from 8:00 AM to midnight, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, per remarks at the last council meeting. And the same thing, MFE, public event on private property, is changed from midnight to 11:00 PM as well. And then finally, the same thing, the MFE, public event on public property, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So, those were consistent throughout. And then I think the last change is under the permit fees, section 19-127. The annual fee is $75, that's set by the state. The fee for an event is $300, except that municipal entities, including departments, boards, committees, and commissions, shall be exempt from paying permit fees. And fundraisers for nonprofit entities shall also be exempt from the event temporary mass gathering permit fees, so they wouldn't get hit with that $300 fee, so. Sure.
I'm sorry. So, on, I think this covered a lot of the questions that I've had, and that some of us have had in the past, except there's still one that I'm a little not clear about, and it's in 19-121 and also in 19-130, and it relates to 4th of July permits.
Right.
And you make it clear that on the day of the 4th, it goes to the 4th of July, and I know that that's what other vendors do, but with the food trucks, so that, you know, there are some food trucks around town, and there are other restaurants that open up and serve outside, whatever, but the concerts that they have for those couple of weeks done at Independence Park, so they have a number of food trucks that have gone there. I think it's been a successful fundraiser for there. Shouldn't this say something along the lines of, on the location, in the same calendar, blah, 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 4th of July, on the day of the 4th of July, shouldn't it say something that relates to 4th of July events that are, you know, in the concerts or like something on public, you know, and other events like the concert series at a public park? And I say public park as opposed to Independence Park because suppose they decide to move it.
I think that's covered by the MFE, the public event on public property. They're already coming in under that, so that they would come in, you know, it would just be, it'd be the 4th of July, would be your public body coming in for their public event, and they're going to say, you know, whatever, June 14th to July 3rd, Independence Park or wherever, if they moved it, they would do it. The reason why we didn't, we needed to do that is because we're really, we're otherwise not allowed to do that. The state law provides, it's supposed to be a uniform process, and anybody who's got one of these MFE licenses anywhere, you know, should be able to come into town and do it. Yet, we clearly have, I mean, if ever there was a mass gathering, it's the 4th of July parade. We're very concerned with control. We don't want people setting up anywhere. People are assigned to their particular locations, so that's why we used the legal construct of considering that a mass gathering and delegating that to the 4th of July committee to basically keep the system that we have now in place under the current thing. And there wouldn't be an extra charge because the 4th of July committee would be exempt from that $300 mass gathering for that day.
So, they're, so beyond that day, they're covered for the other event where they have a lot of food trucks.
Right, right. Whatever they have there, public events on public, or if they have it on private property, whatever it is, they just come under the particular one there.
Okay. I'm happy to see the exemption in there for the fees because that was a concern as well. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Solicitor, can I, can I just refer you to section 19-121?
Yes.
It's the restrictions on municipal MFE permit. Okay? So, you'll see that about six lines down, it says, "A single municipal mobile food establishment permit shall be required to operate within the town. An additional permit shall not be required for operation on more than one day and/or in more than one location in the same calendar year, provided however that on the day of the 4th of July," and so on and so forth. But you'll notice on 19-123 that there is that cap on permits for, is that two times that, that's referred to right there, the two times per year? Is that referred to an individual who would need to get two permits? Because my reading of the ordinance is that, okay, so that would be the business seeking a permit.
That is, that's correct. Or the location, the, that's right. It's the, it's the private property owner that's doing it. The food truck, you know, your neighbor down the street can have two events, and you can have two events, and you can use the same food truck vendor, and he only needs one permit. He doesn't get four permits, he just gets one permit. You, if you're having, because, he gets one MFE license, excuse me, and then you get the permit if you're having the event.
Thank you. What else?
I had a question. I don't, I don't see anything, and maybe you can find it. Trash collection, should, should we put a line in there that the mobile trucks should provide some sort of receptacle and make sure that there's, like? I don't know what my colleagues think on that, but I just think...
I think we, we were trying not to get too much in the weeds with this.
Too late.
Any more than we already were.
I mean, if we look at, you know, 19-125, it says, "Compliance," you know, pretty much, I think, it's covered, "Additionally, mobile food establishments shall comply with all town ordinances, including but not limited to the noise ordinance." So, I would say that it...
And I think as far as their state rules, I mean, I think they're required to have the trash through their, through the state law.
Okay.
So, we were trying not to have that there. I will point out particularly the last section, "No later than November 1st of each year, the town clerk and town administrator shall present a report to the Town Council detailing MFE permits issued during the previous year," because it's my intent that we would look at this after this year, not having a sunset, but at least, let's see how it goes, and if there are problems, we'll amend it for the following year before you issue licenses for next year.
So, Mr. Solicitor, just another scenario that I kind of want to run through real quick before we act on this. You know, on Asylum Road where there's that Dell's Lemonade sometimes by the, by the bike path, right? And it's, it's not a Dell's Lemonade truck, it's like one of those little Dell's Lemonade carts. Where would that fall on here? That would be a MFE, no event.
Well, it's going to be, yeah, that, first of all, it's on state property or...
That is, yeah.
It is on the bike path, yeah.
Yeah, right. And, yeah, and I'm being told that they have a contract with DEM.
Okay.
So, they're there on the state property.
Okay, then the one at Bennys, sometimes the one at the old Bennys, there's one over there.
Right.
That would be MFE, no event.
That's correct, yes. And they'd be outside, they're not in the residential area, so there's no problem there. They're just there, they're limited to the 8:00 AM to sunset.
Currently, which we're going to change to 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
That's correct.
8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, okay.
Anything else? So, as you can see, there was an immense amount of work. This has been continued a couple of times, and it's appropriate.
I do expect we probably will change it again next November after we see how it goes, so, and we're not alone, a lot of, I mean, I know you've had more than one meeting at it. City of Newport had, I think, five different meetings that this came up on.
So, we're ahead by three. I'm happy with that, all right. Excellent.
It's come a long way from the first, the first time it was presented to us, though, I think, it really has.
So, we've made one change that was being proposed.
Well, I think what I would request is a motion to amend the ordinance to, in section one, on section 19-123, the first line, itinerant MFE, to change hours of operation from 8:00 AM to sunset to 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and to change the location restrictions to the word "none" from the ones that are there. And under the line that is MFE, no event, the next to last line, change the hours of operation from 8:00 AM to sunset to 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Does everybody come to a word there?
Yeah.
I am, so moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
That was just on the amendment. Now, you got to...
I want it, I'm done, all said, so, go ahead.
I'll move the, that we adopt the ordinance as amended.
So, move.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Anything else?
Okay. The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is item D1, and this is the petition of William Medina, Green Eggs and Ham LLC, request a vittling license as new owner, existing establishment. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, and also laid item recommendations from the, from the Police Department and Water Push and Control Department.
So, before we take action, is William here? This is your 30-second commercial, William. Welcome. Yeah, not really.
First of all, good night. We just tried to get in, and open, it's open, the place is open. We bought it from Tina.
Yeah.
So, she's willing to stay with, working with us for part-time. We don't really want to change nothing of the menu, everybody loves the menu, but my wife doesn't like the pancakes anymore, because she's been doing it for two weeks straight. She says she's not going to order pancakes anymore when she goes to breakfast, but whatever you want us to do, I mean, we'll do it.
You're really hard to work with, I'm sorry. This is going to work out. Was that Mary?
Do you currently work there?
Where? Right now?
Yeah, where are you working there before?
Well, I have a few restaurants in Connecticut, and I used to go have breakfast all the time over there, and one time I was having breakfast with my wife every Friday, and then...
Pancakes?
No pancakes for me.
Okay.
I work a lot, so I try not to eat too many pancakes. And all of a sudden, Tina says that she wants to sell the place, and it seems like a very nice cozy breakfast place that everybody loves to go.
Yeah.
Everybody is friendly, and the food is amazing, I can tell you that. I highly recommend it to go, and it's not really pricey like everybody says, because it's a lot of labor into that, it's, everything is done fresh, 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 fresh daily. So, what we want to change is, they make us take the side next to, you know, the, it does one unit, so it's 7A, 7B, and we want to see if we can open the wall, because that's a division wall in the middle, but people wait outside in the winter, in 5-degree weather, or 10 degrees, it's so cold, so we want to make a waiting area inside, you can wait inside, and you expand, the tables are way too tight right now, so we want to keep the same seats, but you spread it more on the other side, you know? So, everybody feels more comfortable, and you can bring your kids, and nobody will spill coffee on top of your kids or something like that, because you know how kids are. So, they run around sometimes, and right now, they really barely walk, so...
So, before we wish you luck, what's this council's pleasure?
My motion is to, our motion is to approve the vittling license for the new owner.
Right.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Good luck.
Good luck to you, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Great place, so best of luck.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it, and I wish you guys can come, I don't know if you guys been there, but it's, it has really great reviews. We just want to make it better. We just want to keep the same menu and just keep running the way it is for many, I think it's been open for 16 years.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Yeah, so we just want to keep, keep it open for another 50 years.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, the best of luck.
Yeah.
Mr. Clerk.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is item D2, and this is the petition of Carolyn Almonte for Ality Mount Carmel School, requests council consideration for a one-day dancing and entertainment license for April 3rd. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator and Fire Chief.
Based on the recommendations, I move that we approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the next is item D3, and this is the petition of Michelle Martins for the Bristol 4th July Committee, requests council consideration for a bingo license to be held at 8:50 Hope Street on March 10th. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, and Chief of Police.
Based on all the positive recommendations, I make motion to approve the petition for a bingo license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is petition arraignment Estelaio for Gooding Realty, 16 Gooding Avenue, regarding their petition for a curb cut on Naomi Street for access to the shopping center. This was continued from January 29th. You have recommendations provided by the Department of Public Works, and also additional correspondence from the petitioner.
So, this was put on the agenda because, it was kind of part of the sale of the Gooding Avenue Plaza, and I apologize if I keep referring to that incorrectly, but we know which property that we're speaking of, and part of this, as part of their lease, had the right to have a curb cut on Naomi. Part of the discussion, a lot of the discussion, had to do with potentially having trucks come in through there as a way to service the buildings that were there, but, and looking at it with the town and with the engineer of the applicant and the engineer of the town, it turned into be a lot more than anybody was hoping for in regards to improvements to Gooding Ave. and Naomi Street. So, on recommendation of the town engineer, it was proposed that this turn into a right turn-in and a right turnout for motor vehicles only, so normal trucks, cars, passenger vehicles, if you will. There was a lot of discussion that had to, that went into this on both sides, and this does not preclude the applicant moving forward if they wanted to do improvements to that area with state and town approval, of course, if they wanted to change things in the future, obviously, this does not preclude them from doing that. So, I think that was a nice synopsis of why was this here, and we do have recommendations from the DBW Director, and of course, as I said, that was a recommendation from our town engineer.
Based on the recommendations, I move that we approve it.
May I ask a question?
You can, actually, but in a moment. So, we have a motion to approve? You can come up to the, to the mic. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, please.
So, the Ted Spinad, S.P.I.N.A.D., 35 Dotmouth Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. I was not aware that there had been some additional information that had been submitted. The information that I saw was from the town engineer, I'm sorry, from the Department of Public Works, the Town Administrator, and the... of Public Works, the town administrator, and the police chief. And that recommendation was to do a traffic study to determine if in fact this curb cut was warranted. The neighbors have expressed to me some, some very concerns about the safety issue on this, on this street, particularly given that it's a very narrow street, that it's used, it's actually a local street, not sure why we would want to introduce additional traffic onto a local street, as well as it's used, there's a sidewalk there that's used for the high school people, et cetera. And so, I'm not sure why we have not, why we have changed it to suggest that a traffic study would not be recommended, as well as Mr. McBride's recommendation, that because of the concerns here that have been expressed by my neighbors, that this should go through the proper process, which includes the planning board review, as well as the town engineer, and if needed, an independent engineer analysis of this. As I said, it's a local street, it's seven, it's only 17 feet wide, you have a sidewalk there, you have heavy pedestrian traffic. I really believe that you owe it to the neighborhood to do an appropriate study on this, as Mr. McBride has suggested.
So Mr. McBride actually gave us an updated finding, and that was based off the updated request for the curb cut? I should back up a little bit, part of the request was actually the lease that the town had well before our everybody's here time, was that it included a curb cut on Naomi, that was never taken advantage of. This, when this came to this council at our last meeting, it was based off using it as a truck entrance, and possibly an exit too, but I'll say an entrance at the moment. When we, the town, looked at it, including our engineer and Kevin McBride, Diane Williamson, the administrator was at this meeting that we had recently, to do that, allow, it would have required the Gooding-Niomi intersection to be widened, utility poles moved, because the turning radius of a truck was obviously larger than a car, and all of those things made it this Herculean effort, at least for, at the moment. So our town engineer, Anna Novo is her name, looked at all of this and said, it was her opinion that a right turn in, meaning so coming from Gooding Avenue, taking a right into the Gooding Avenue Plaza, or coming out of Gooding Avenue Plaza and taking a right on Naomi, passenger cars only was the least, affected the area the least. Part of the conversation I'll share with you at this meeting was that there was talk about the widening of the road, the responsibility at the time was going to be truck access to that, but that has since changed. One of the major concerns that was expressed by all at the meeting was that traffic that queues up on Naomi, taking a left or a right, that was why a right turn was proposed by the engineer and summarily accepted by everyone, honestly, so. So it is, it was part of the agreement for the lease, that's why it's in front. Two was, we were concerned about that, and I know this council is concerned about that, and the town is. So that's where the right in and out came from, and you, you had actually expressed, well, what happens, you know, should there be a traffic study? When the, it was based off truck, yeah, there was, but actually Anna Novo, again, our engineer for the town, looked at this and proposed this solution that'd be the least invasive to it, while keeping the agreement that was promised by the town to the applicant.
So, just a couple of points.
Of course.
If you, first of all, the agreement is, what, almost 60 years old? A lot has changed since then. Second of all, this, again, this is a local road. Third, who is going to police to make sure truck traffic doesn't come down Naomi Street? Again, it's 17 feet wide, you cannot get a truck and a school bus.
I can answer that. The way this will have to be engineered is that you won't be able to take a left-hand turn, a truck won't be able to get in there unless they knock over shrubs and curbing and all of that stuff, and obviously, nobody wants to do that, so. The other thing is, is that we didn't share this part of it, I apologize, is part of the sale of Gooding Avenue Plaza from the town to the DeLeo family and others, the parking lot needs to be greened, greened meaning there'll be islands in the parking lot to catch rainwater, to keep things from going into our, water going down to Silver Creek, such and so forth. Part of that redesign will require, what was initially proposed to this council and the town, was a certain look there, that's going to have to be changed, because trucking will need to get in and out of that plaza, which will make it very difficult, I don't even know how a truck could go out of this or get into this on that side access to Naomi. So that addresses your concern on that.
So, personally, I think it's very unfair to the neighborhood to have changed this without giving us the opportunity to take a look at this, or without having it being technically reviewed by what Mr. McBride has suggested. The plan that was submitted shows nothing about line of sight, grade and drainage, all those concerns that you have just indicated to me that you, that they have addressed.
Actually, no, I didn't, what I talked about with concerns to drainage and all of that had to do with the parking lot itself, and my point in sharing that with you was that it would be, I don't know if it would be possible, and I hate to say, nothing is impossible, I suppose, but it would, you'd have to go over center islands and guardrails and all of that, and that is separate and apart from the curb cut, I guess.
I understand that, but the curb cut itself, have you, the plan that was submitted to you showed a 40-foot radius as a curb cut. As recently as Monday, I was, my wife was there, and there was no additional information that was shown to us. And so what I'm saying is that whatever the curb cut is, I have no idea where the radius is going to be, but you have a line of sight that you need to look at, because there is bushes, et cetera. You have a grade that has to be looked at, because you have whatever coming up, and then, and then in terms of a line of sight, you have drainage that needs to be looked at. None of this information we have, has been shared with the neighborhood. And again, I just think it's very unfair that the information that was given to us never addressed any of this, and quite frankly, we came to this meeting to at least express the concern that the neighbors have had in terms of safety, because of the narrowness of that road, the pedestrian traffic, none of those issues have been talked about.
We didn't talk about them here, and typically, I don't know if you know this or not, but we've had a process change at the council, going back probably about six years or so, with curb cuts, and curb cuts don't make it to our standard agenda unless it's recommended as a denial. As you know, it was initially recommended as a denial, this is now recommended as approved. You bring up Mr. McBride, Mr. McBride is suggesting this should be approved, and that's what our recommendation is. Let me finish, please.
Sure.
So, Mr. McBride is suggesting that we approve this, this council approve this. Our town engineer is, is, is saying that we should approve this as it sits now. This typically wouldn't have this kind of conversation on a council level, and I did that on purpose, and we did that on purpose, because we felt it was more appropriate that that should happen with engineers and planner, Diane Williamson would also be included with conversations like that. This is not the purview of the council in the sense of, you mentioned drainage, such and so, that was looked at, that's why we employed our engineer to do that, that's why we asked Kevin McBride, who's also an engineer, to give us his recommendation, and we got a thumbs up. What I should do is I'm going to stop for a moment, and I'm going to ask my colleagues, what's your thoughts on this? If I'm absolutely okay with continuing it if you thought it was appropriate, I feel that we have all of our recommendations, I'm not trying to push it through, this was continued from our last meeting, but we have our recommendations to move forward, with no objections from, the people that you expressed had issues, no longer do. And I believe this was done appropriately, you should also know this, didn't share this too, is that it's my understanding the applicant has no intentions of cutting the curb tomorrow or next week, obviously, they have a lot to do, that they want to do before they take this next step, they could with this approval, I shouldn't say they can't, but I should say that from speaking with them, they had no intentions of doing it tomorrow or next week, so.
Again, this is all new information, the neighbors have never seen any plans which shows a revised curb cut, which shows the drainage, which shows line of sight, which addresses the safety concerns that they have expressed. I, I think you owe it to the neighborhood, instead of doing a surprise like is happening tonight.
It's not a surprise, and that's not fair.
Well, it is a surprise.
No, it's not.
Because we were there on Monday, and we asked for the information in terms of this petition, and what we were given was what the original recommendations were, we were never given any of the revised information. And I think you owe it to the neighborhood to address those concerns.
So let me get a couple of points of clarity, Diane, if you could, in regards to a curb cut, is that require, and, and feel free, if the clerk or the solicitor want to reach in here, but, does that require notification? I'm not suggesting that we should hide anything, but I am suggesting, does it require notification to the neighborhood?
No.
Okay. And then, in typical fashion, when we do curb cuts like this, as I said, these are usually part of the consent agenda, and just for clarity in the consent agenda, those things are approved unless there's an action taken by this council, each council member could pull an agenda item out from the consent and have specific dialogue about it, if not, we get things from other communities that typically go in there along with curb cuts, such and so forth, it's more of a receive and file process. But in regards to a curb cut, is there normally public, is there any kind of information that goes out to the public? Obviously, the public can know anything and everything that we're talking about, but it isn't...
There's no public notice requirement.
Okay, all right. Colleagues?
Can I just ask Diane, just for clarification, if I remember correctly, any of the projects that Gooding Realty would, would be doing, in that, on that property, would require the regular process, am I right, the, the planning board, et cetera?
That's right, they would have to come in for their land development project.
Maybe not the curb cut, but any of the, all of the, all of the grading, all of the, the whole project, when they're going to redo the building and the parking lot, all of that, make sure drainage and everything is covered.
Right.
And that would go through, that's a great point, Mary, thank you.
That would be, that would be a land development project, and it would go through the planning board at that time. As you stated, this is really their request for the curb cut exclusively, and knowing that the rest of it will come when the property is transferred to them.
Okay, but we could get the, we can go through the process on this and get the planning board's recommendation if we, if we wanted to, yeah.
Have we done that in the past? I'm not precluding us from doing.
And Mr. Chairman, you've done a great job explaining it, and I, and I under, understand your concerns, and I, and I think, to my colleagues, if, if, what the chairman says, we don't need to rush this, if we need to take another council meeting to kind of flush everything out, and if you guys feel strongly, maybe we should move it to the planning board, get a recommendation, and dot our i's and cross our t's on it, that's my feeling.
I will just add that if you send it to the planning board for a recommendation, that does not have a public notice requirement either, so there's no obligation on our part to actually send notice of the application to the, to the neighbors.
Diane, can you tell us when the next... Can you tell us when the next planning board meeting is?
There is a meeting next week, a week from tonight, February 26th, that's following your workshop on the zoning ordinance revisions.
That's right, okay, yeah.
Is this too late, is this too late to put this, this on that agenda?
That agenda hasn't been posted yet, we, we'd have 48 hours, so we could, we could add it to that agenda, I don't know if the board would want any other information from the consultant engineer or Mr. McBride, and if that isn't available to them, they may continue it also, but we could at least put it in front of them and see what their recommendation is, or what their discussion is about it, yeah.
Anyone else?
Yes, I was just wondering, I, I know, you know, we're not trying to rush through it, I fully understand, I understand the concerns of the residents as well, as well, but was there a timeline from the, you were following, I mean, this goes to the petitioners, was there a request for a particular timeline?
I, I'll respond to part of that, if I may, and certainly, I know the Delayers are here, please feel free to, to share your thoughts, but I know that this is part of the purchase and sales agreement, I should say, it's, it's part of the conversation, this was the last piece of the purchase and sales to be signed, so. If you would allow Mr. DeLeo to come up, thank you.
Ray DeLeo, Gooding Realty, first of all, I'd like to say, I think there's a misconception here about this possibly adding any traffic onto Naomi Street, and I don't see that as happening, because I think the only people that are going to use this exit onto Naomi Street are going to be the ones that normally go out on Gooding now, take a right on Naomi, and head towards Chestnut. So I don't think there's going to be, this is going to create additional traffic, this is just a shortcut for the people that are going to go down Naomi anyway. You're not going to have people that want to get up to Gooding Avenue, I mean, Medicum Avenue, using this exit, because it's, they're only going to be able to take a right turn out. Initially, yes, we did envision this as being a way for trucking to go in and out and get some of the relief out of the circulation within the shopping center. Number two, this was shown on the plan we presented in October, so I hardly see this as any kind of a surprise to the public, we sat up here with our landscape architect, and the plan that you have clearly shows an exit entrance on Naomi Street. As far as the recommendation from Mr. McBride, I just got my copy this morning, and there were a couple little surprises in there that we, we hadn't talked about, but they're things we can live with. And like we've said before, we've had the, the right to put in an entrance exit since 1958, so I don't see this as anything new, just was never done, it was never envisioned. So with encumbering the, the shopping center with traffic islands and plantings, there has to be some kind of relief, because the only way out of that center now is Gooding Avenue, and if there was some reason roadwork, or flooding, or something on Gooding, how would you get out? You have the three entrances on Gooding, three exits on Gooding, nothing on Naomi, and one entrance on Hope Street, so this would just be the second exit. I don't, I don't know if that answers your concerns, but I really don't see this as impacting traffic at all, it's the same cars going onto Naomi.
We're going to stop here just for a moment, so I don't want to, this was not a public hearing, that doesn't mean that, obviously, this council typically allows public comment, but I don't want to do the back and forth here, if, what I'd like to know from this council, knowing what you know, and I'm not, unless there's new information that, that you'd like to share, at this point, I think we're at this, I don't, it's, it's not an impasse in my head, I know that there was a lot of effort and energy put into this, and I don't believe this was last minute in any way, shape, or form, I think Mr. DeLeo brought up a good point about it being in front. I do agree that this was a change in what the recommendation was, that would be, I'd be rivius in not saying that, so it was recommended to say no, but that was based off a trucking route as opposed to a passenger car route, so that's a huge difference. The other part is, is that it's a right turn in and a right turn out, so those, the combination of all of these things made me comfortable, but this council needs to be comfortable, so. If this council would like to continue this and find a recommendation, or whether it's from the planning board or clear recommendation from, I know Kevin's not here tonight, I'm okay with that. I don't see it necessary, but if this council prefers to go that route, I'm happy to go that route.
Well, excuse me, based on the recommendation of the Director McBride, who is also a civil engineer by trade, I mean, he obviously took into consideration all the pieces there, and I understand, you know, the concern there, however, you know, the explanation by Mr. DeLeo, that, that really is just an optional in and out, out of the plaza there, which right now, I mean, quite often, I take Naomi as an option not to deal with Medicum or Hope Street. So Debbie answered, I don't see this as an increase in traffic, I really don't, I see more as an exit, as he pointed out, is a relief from the area, if there is an issue on Gooding Avenue, or not an accessibility through Hope Street, so I'm not seeing this as a big hiccup, personally.
But with all due respect, with all due respect, you have never shown these plans to the neighborhood.
But there's no requirement to, again, it's...
I understand there's no requirement, but don't you believe that because this is, this is putting traffic onto a street that is clearly, doesn't have the width of a, of, based on your town standards, that has heavy pedestrian traffic, that, don't you owe it to the neighborhood at least to give them the opportunity to look at... at least to give them the opportunity to look at these plans, whatever they are? I don't even know what they are, because the plan that was submitted showed a 40-foot radius. How that relates to drainage, how that relates to line of sight, and with all due respect, whether it introduces more traffic or less traffic, it should be a plan that the neighbors can look at, that they realize that this is done appropriately according to the town standards. That plan that was submitted has nothing.
So I would say this, two things. One is it does, because the people that make that call, our DPW director, as my colleague mentioned, is a civil engineer. I'm going to paraphrase, he gave it a thumbs up. Our civil engineer, our, excuse me, our traffic engineer, Anna Novo, gave it a thumbs up. So all, the process was followed correctly, but as I said earlier, wait, please, you're not letting me finish, sir.
But the neighbors never.
I'm going to finish on this one. Thank you. So let's, but let's stop right here and say, there is no, I'm not aware of any real reason why a three-week extension on this hurts anything. My colleagues can express their opinion, but honestly, there's no push to do this. Besides that we wanted this completed, this has gone on much longer than anyone had hoped for, and we felt we found a conclusion here. But I don't think three weeks are going to stop us from finding that conclusion regardless, meaning that it'll go through the process, it'll give you an opportunity. What's my colleague's thoughts?
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a good call on your part to definitely, I would make a motion to continue this, the March 11th meeting, with also moving this to the planning board for a recommendation on their 26th, their upcoming meeting, to get their eyes on it.
I would support the motion with the exception of the planning board. I think it's unnecessary to really go through that loop at this point. I understand, given the opportunity for the residents to review the plans, you know, but in order to go to the planning board, I would vote against that.
So there's a motion. So I would ask for a second.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
For discussion. Go ahead.
Well, I just, I mean, I can live kind of with it either way. And in fairness to the council, I would say, I understand the concern you're raising, but we had a public hearing on the, didn't we, on the sale of this project, this property, and what it encumbered. And it's been a very lengthy process of negotiations and so, and we had the public forum on that. And all of these things were discussed with graphics and so forth. And I don't think, outside of this curb cut, I don't think the plan, I don't think there is a plan yet that the Delaios have for what this is ultimately going to look like. And so I think all of those are down the road where there will be the regular process through the planning board and everything else. And so I think there'll be plenty of opportunity to comment on the general, you know, upgrade hopefully of the area. So I think there has been, and I think, I'm sort of envisioning this in my mind, that this is very similar in the same area that you already have a curb cut on Naomi on the other side. And I'm not sure that there have been like tremendous problems with that. Have there? I'll ask you, because you live there. I mean, I traveled down it just as you do, like going back and forth. But I mean, the restaurant on the other side has a curb cut on Naomi as its main entrance and exit. And I don't know that that has impeded traffic or endangered, like, I know the kids walk back and forth to school, but I mean, I don't even know on that side if there's a sidewalk on that side or not. I just don't recall at the top of my head.
There is no sidewalk on that side. Also, there have been some issues because that curb cut is very close to the intersection. The issue with the other side is that there is a sidewalk, there is a grade change.
Right, I know that.
And so there's a line of sight. There's also a, between the sidewalk and the shopping center, there's also a whole range of growth which would impede a line of sight. And so there are some more concerns on that side than there is on the other side. And so all we're saying is, we have seen, a landscape plan, with all due respect, is not an engineering plan in terms of how you make that, it's not only the curb cut, again, it's the line of sight which has interference right now. You have the poles, et cetera. It's also the grade change, and it's also the drainage. You don't want to have drainage going on Naomi Street.
No, we don't. And I would imagine that the way the grade is.
With all due respect, we haven't seen anything.
And I don't mind waiting. I'm just curious about, like, I would imagine that no one would put a curb cut without making sure that people are going to be able to safely get in and get out of that location. I mean.
We would hope so, but we haven't seen anything.
Of course you can. Go ahead.
I need to interrupt the flow.
Not that, please.
I was just thinking, as I'm hearing the discussion, the planning board will, as they always do, seek a recommendation from Director McBride. He's already given one to you. I'm sure he'll give the same one to the board. And so I don't know if their recommendation will necessarily change the outcome. But what the planning board does usually want to see is the detailed plan that Mr. Spinnard is speaking of. And I feel like if maybe there's a way to approve it, subject to coordination on the plan and the engineering details to be worked out with the DPW director and the consulting engineer, because a lot of these things are things that rightly pointed out. I mean, it's going to have to work for the plaza as well as it's going to have to work for the town as well, you know. So these are things that can be designed and engineered and maybe just putting it out there as an idea to do an approval subject to these finer points being designed.
Well, imagine we could put restrictions that there has to be a clear line of sight.
Right.
You know, and that the shrubbery has to be moved back. The whole point of greening of that plaza is to address the drainage issue and to, you know, drainage in general. I know it's a big problem of drainage in that area.
Right.
But also just to stop the flow of storm water going through our system.
Right.
As much as possible. So I mean, I think that that is a very big priority, is the drainage aspect.
Right.
So I mean, I think all those things are going to be addressed, but you know, I don't, if we do take a vote today and make those restrictions, or we take a vote in three weeks, I don't think it makes that much difference. But I do think those restrictions are, so if the neighborhood feels more comfortable taking a look and making sure what the restrictions would be or suggesting some, then that may be okay to do.
Right.
You know, but I do think that we need to make sure that that's clear. Now, whether there's going to be like an actual detailed plan available in three weeks, or if there's like, you know, like Kevin may know, you may know, I don't know. Anytime you put a driveway or a curb cut in, you have to have, there must be some spec somewhere of what that line of sight is, isn't there? Are there?
Yes.
I would imagine there would be, right? That we'd have to follow.
Diane, in past, has, have we ever, or does the planning board weigh in in regards to a curb cut in and of itself? I would imagine not, right? You don't do a curb cut without other actions being affected, obviously.
I haven't recalled that the councils refer to specific curb cut to the planning board. They usually see it, as you said, with part of the overall site plan, engineering plan, drainage plan, and so forth, which we don't yet have those details.
So let's do this. We have a recommendation from planning engineer. We have a motion and a second, at least for discussion purposes, to continue this to our next meeting and seek a recommendation from our planning board. Unless anyone else would like to go a different direction, I'd like to take a vote there. So a motion and.
I'm just a bit unclear about the planning board and the undue hardship, you know, to loop that one. I really do. I mean, we have an engineer. I can understand about the residents want to view the plan. So if we want to continue, allow them to take a look at what's available. And if there's any further concerns, then we'll address them. But if not, you know, at the next meeting, we should be able to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, the motion that I have does not include the planning board.
I apologize. I thought I heard that from you, too.
I did.
Tim said that, yeah.
Well, it was, but the second, basically, the second said without the planning board.
Gotcha. Fair enough.
And then we had a, we had a further second on the second.
So we have a third now?
I took the second and the third.
I segmented it as a second of Tim's, not of Tony. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. So let's do this. What do we have for a motion? And we'll take a vote to move forward. I personally am okay with this. Quite honestly, I'm okay with continuing it, but I do agree with Tony. I don't think it needs to go in front of planning. We don't require that of anyone else. Why would we do it in this instance? That's my personal opinion, but I will not object if that's what the motion is. So what is the motion?
So my motion is to continue it to the next council meeting and to have the planning board just take a look at it, get a recommendation. Also, it gives the neighborhood a chance to be able to be part of the process and fully understand it and digest it. And then when that recommendation comes back to us within that three-week time and we take a vote, that's my process.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. And I'll ask Diane, so this, having the planning board meeting will allow a date and time for the residents to come in, sit down, and hear more about the plan. That's what it will allow the residents to do.
No.
So there's no public hearing.
So there's no public hearing, but it will allow the residents to still nevertheless come in and hear in a structured way at a certain date and time, the recommendation from.
So they'll be able to.
Diane, just stop for a moment.
No, no, please.
Go ahead.
So they'll, there will be, this will be added to the agenda for the planning board meeting next week. The residents can come and listen to the board.
Great.
There is not an opportunity to call for a public testimony. There's no public hearing. There's no notice given. But since they're aware of it and they will no doubt come, the chairman may, as a courtesy, you know, ask for input, but it's not required. And there shouldn't really be an expectation that that will happen. I, at this point, will only have the information that the council refers to me for the planning board. So we'll have to see whether or not the planning board wants to make a recommendation for, you know, with conditions or with further details to be ironed out, or if they're going to want to see those details before they give you their recommendation. So there's a little bit that I'm just not sure about in terms of what the planning board will do with it.
Can I just ask, then, why, if we, so if we just went directly, like if Mrs. Spinnard and the neighbors were to meet with, you know, Steve and, you know, the Delaios, and talk about what that plan is going to look like, you know, like what is that requirement of site lines and in general? I know you may not have like the exact engineering details. Wouldn't that be more expeditious than trying to get the planning, than going through the planning board? And then if they don't have the information, then it goes to their next meeting and kind of drives on in that way. I mean, you want to know what the plan is. And to me, that would be like sitting down with Kevin McBride with Gooding Realty and, you know, Steve, and you would find, get that just as easily as going to the planning board, I think. I mean, I don't know.
Actually better.
Yeah, you get it quicker.
Yes. Mr. Administrator, go ahead.
I think Councilwoman Preller is right on with this. We can meet with Anna Novo from Caputo and Wick, Kevin McBride, who is, this is what he did for a living. Just for public disclosure, his latest revised recommendation, I'm going to read a section, unfortunately at a personal commitment tonight, you couldn't be here, but I'm going to read a section of his recommendation. In order to restrict traffic to right in, right out, a raised island with curbing at this location will be required. It is understood that trucks will be restricted from using this access egress and that signage will be placed on-site noting this restriction. The council may also want to consider restricting trucks on Naomi Street to ensure this new entrance does not generate truck traffic. A curb cut is something that's granted regularly by the council. The public, I believe, at large, has a very large interest in this purchase going through. It benefits the entire area, it benefits our local economy, our businesses. It's kind of, it is important to us. As Mr. Delio said, that right-hand turn, and I visualized myself driving in and out of there when I stopped in the plaza, I think he's right. I think that traffic that typically takes a right and goes south, you're going to find that traffic on Naomi also. But Mr. Spinnard did make a great point regarding site distance. We want to make sure it's safe. And so my recommendation to the council would be approve it with the condition that Anna Novo approves with Kevin McBride of the curb cut and there's no objections from the director. And that meeting be set up with the neighbors here at Town Hall so you can look at the plan, your concerns about site distance are brought up. And at that point, we can move forward with getting a curb cut for vehicles. And again, it's restrictive. Trucks are not going to be able to negotiate through there. It's going to have curbing in there, which the petitioner actually wasn't planning on doing. But I think we should move it forward. But he's absolutely right. The public should have their input, and we are concerned about safety. So we'll make sure that both engineers are on board with it.
Can I just say this?
To drag this out with the planning board, I think this is going to be a very long time. And this, this property has been in stagnation for quite a long time, and it's becoming a little bit of a negative image on the town as you come into town. So I think this entrance and egress for vehicles only, right-hand turn only, right in, right out, won't be that severe of an impact. And that's what Anna Novo stated to us, vehicles right-hand in, right-hand out. And it would help business, it would help traffic flow. But let's get the concerns from the neighbors on record with our engineers, and let's see if there's any improvements, other improvements that we can make.
Mary, before you do, Tim, it's your motion on the floor. Your thoughts?
Yeah, you know, I'm more comfortable, as long as the neighbors and the public are involved and they're part of the process and that we're making the best decision for not only the shopping center, but for the people of Bristol. That's my main concern. So I think that's everybody's main concern. I just want to make that clear. So.
How about this, then? How about if we, instead of sending it to the planning board, we do as was suggested by the administrator, I believe by Mary, too, and by Tony, that we continue this to our next meeting, allow the opportunity before a final decision is made, that the neighbors can express their concerns, talk to the engineers, plural, and we'll just continue this to the next meeting. Is that okay with everyone? Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to take that as a motion. May I?
Yes, that's a motion.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Discussion before we make that vote?
I just want to make sure it's really, I think you just summed it up, that it was clear, because for a minute there, when the administrator was speaking, there were really three ideas floating around.
There was.
One was the planning board, one was just going out, having the meeting and coming back to us, and then one was approving it and then going out with, subject to those conditions. So it's, just to be clear, we're going to ask that that meeting take place, but we're not going to vote on this until the next meeting. But it's not going to go to the planning board.
As much as I'm okay with it, we've all expressed that we hear the concerns of the neighbors. And I don't see how three weeks will, unfortunately, I would have liked to have seen this done, but I don't think three weeks is going to hurt. So we have a motion and a second to continue this to the next meeting.
Mr. Delio, stand there. I don't know if you want to address anything that.
At this point, I just, I just don't see what this is going to do other than delay it that much further, because you're going to hear from the same experts, you're going to hear about the same plan in the same location. Like I said, the concept has been on the site plan since October, and you've had two go-arounds now. And going to third, I mean, it's up to you. It's that much longer before this is going to, the sale is going to get settled.
I do agree with your points, but at this point in time, I don't, I don't think an extra little bit of caution and a little bit of outreach to the public is a bad thing at this point. So.
We just want to get treated like everyone else.
Fair enough. We have a motion and a second to continue to our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And you're going to set that meeting up, Mr. Administrator, Steve? You're going to set that meeting up in the near future?
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. We have item F2. This is the petition of Armand de Maderes, 40 Born Street, requesting the removal of an accessible parking space located in the vicinity of 39 Born Street. This is the second reading for adoption. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, chief of police, and Department of Public Works.
Based on the recommendations, I move that we approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the removal. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item F3. This is the petition of Michael T. Burns on behalf of Explore Bristol for the Bristol Motorcar Festival, request for permission for special event at Independence Park on June 12th, and to serve, sell alcoholic beverages, and one-day dancing and entertainment license for that event, and also request use of the Southwest Field at the Town Beach on June 13th. You have recommendations provided by the. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, Director of Public Works, Chief of Police, and a laid out recommendation by the Director of Parks and Recreation.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, but I wanna take a moment, I know Mr. Burns is here, did you wanna take a moment to, uh, share with the public, uh, any changes or...
Yes.
With the PR.
It's your 30-second commercial, sir.
We're gonna make that for everybody.
20-second commercial, sir.
Okay, start the clock. We've got a new partnership arrangement this year with British Motorcars of New England, it's a very large group, so we hope, uh, that we'll get a few more vehicles, uh, at the show. Attendance will be by donation only, no charge for attendance. Thank you.
Mr. Burns, or General, General Burns, right? Uh, can you make sure that, I, I had emailed one of your, your colleagues at Explore Bristol, but make sure that people know that they can take the ferry down for the British Motorcar Festival.
I'm sorry, make, make sure that it's advertised?
Make sure that the people that are coming into Bristol know that they can take the ferry and, and attend the British Motorcar Festival. Make sure it's on all your marketing materials.
When they come into town, they love it and a lot of the people come back again and again, so it's a great place, great venue for the show.
This is a great event. So, this is June 12th and June 13th, so we have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is item F4, this is the petition of Debbie De Silva, 513 and a half Wood Street, request for removal of existing no parking area. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Director of Public Works and Police Department, all suggesting denial of the petition.
Motion to deny.
Could we take a moment here? Typically, we don't get a, a denial or suggestion to denial.
Mr. Administrator, are you familiar with the particulars from the recommendation?
I am, uh, the Director McBride's concern is, uh, sight exiting Born Street from, uh, the visibility of southbound traffic on Wood Street. So, typically, there's no parking 15 feet from a corner, so this, this parking space is actually within that 15 feet, partially within that 15 feet.
Got it. And the request was to remove this no parking, and it is there to make sure that the, in earlier conversation, we were having line of sight, correct?
Yeah, and safe driver sight, my understanding.
Typically, if it's a two-way side street, it's not much, it's not that much of an issue, because you have the adjacent lane that provides sight, uh, sight of view, but this is a one-way exiting, there's very little visibility if there's a car or a van parked on that corner.
Thank you. So, we had a motion to deny, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the item F5, this is the petition of John Gaspar of 10 Chilton Street, request council consideration for an accessible parking space, and you have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Director of Public Works and Chief of Police to deny.
I'm gonna do this again, Mr. Administrator, we, again, typically don't get a, a recommendation to deny, and I'm certainly happy to refer this to the chief, 'cause he's sitting right next to you. I'd just like to take a moment, typically, these kinda go through when it makes it to this point.
Yes, the Police Department Sergeant Kenny responded to that location and Mr. Gaspar of 10 Chilton Street is requesting a handicap parking space in front of his home residence. Uh, the police officers spoke with Mr. Gaspar regarding this matter, at which time he was informed that there's only street parking at the residence. Mr. Gaspar does have an active handicap placard active until May of 2021.
So, why was it, I'm sorry, I missed the point, which, what was the denial recommendation? Why denied?
What's the DPW?
I'm so sorry, it was DPW that...
I think it was because there was a, there was driveway and the question was, why couldn't he park in the driveway, is what I think, because that's come up before. And then Mr. Gaspar says, in one of the, what was just read, that he only has on-street parking, he doesn't have accessibility to the, access to the driveway. Am I correct?
Yes.
So, I don't think the denial, I think when the police went out to check it out, they found that they, that he doesn't have the access to the driveway. So, it'd either be negotiating with the landlord to give him space in the driveway, as, as we've done in another situation, or to approve it, I would think.
I, I have to, I have to apologize, I, I concurred with the Police Department's recommendation and I didn't, I didn't look at it close enough, but I am in agreement with, uh, Mr. Gaspar's petition.
To approve?
I didn't concur with the directors, um, and then the Police Department's, I, I misread it, my apologies. So, I, I know the situation there, I know the property, um, the property owners actually park in the driveway, Mr. Gaspar is a tenant who has a handicap placard, so, um, I, I think he should be granted. My, my recommendation is not to...
So, why don't we do this?
I do too.
This is a first reading, why don't we, uh, make a motion to approve the first reading? It'll give an opportunity for additional conversation at the second reading if there's any reason that we should deny it at that point. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I agree with it.
Right, it's a first reading, so, motion to approve the first reading.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The final petition is from Melissa Cudero, 31 First School Street, for PSI Need Help 5K Walk regarding a petition to hold a community walk-run event on May 30th. You have laid out recommendations provided by the Police Department of Public Works, Town Administrator and Fire on this matter.
What's this council's pleasure?
Based on all the positive recommendations, I make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and this is your 30-second commercial, feels like we've got a reoccurring theme here.
Actually, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question, and Melissa can answer it, obviously. Uh, the starting location, if I'm reading this correct, is gonna be Independence Park?
So, we will be gathering at Independence Park, but the actual race starts right at the bike path. I did get DEM approval and I did put a, uh, recommend, uh, request in for, um, the facility use at Independence Park through Parks and Rec.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
30-second commercial.
Okay, so, um, we are hosting a race, um, with the approval of the Town Council on May 30th, um, for, to raise awareness for suicide and mental health issues. As we may know and may not know, May is the month of mental health awareness. Um, I take it very personally, I've lost six friends to suicide, and so it's not something that I take very lightly, and I'm trying to raise, raise awareness in our community. Uh, we are working collaboratively with, um, the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention, Missy Ames is, um, working with us. We are also working with Bristol HES, Emily Spence has been great on this, um, and we're just trying to raise funds for educational purposes, to bring money back into the schools. We will be donating to the Bristol Warren Education Foundation, along with AFSP and Bristol Health, so that way, every, um, money that we raise will go back into the community for mental health awareness and suicide awareness.
So, if someone is interested in being part of this, how would they do that?
Well, they can contact me directly, um, at melsal78@gmail.com. Um, we will have a website up and running, hopefully by March 1st, I was just waiting to get all of our approvals before we go and do that. Um, AFSP will also have its, um, advertised on their website as well.
Okay.
So, all the information will be there.
Excellent.
Great.
And we will be using the ferry, we'll, we'll be marketing that, so that way they can come and use that.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion...
Will it be running though, May 30th?
No, not yet, I don't believe so.
You can walk it, if you don't wanna run it.
You can walk from Providence. So, we have a motion and a second to approve, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, it's a great event.
Chief?
Yes, Sergeant Maderis looked over the, uh, 5K, uh, race route and, uh, we've recommended that Mrs. Cudero meet with the Police Department to determine, um, some details. We will do our very best to provide on-duty personnel to control the costs, um, to make sure that it's safe for the runners and pedestrian and, um, vehicles traveling in the area. But I would, uh, ask the council that she come in and, uh, work out, uh, the number of officers that will be needed. We're still waiting on a count of volunteers that she will have to assist with traffic and, um, pedestrian for traffic.
So, why don't we get that motion amended to include that recommendation? So moved.
Yes, may I say one more thing, I'm so sorry.
One sec, well, who's the second?
Second.
Second, okay, so you have a motion, second, go ahead.
I did speak to Sergeant Paul Maderis as well and I, I will be meeting with him, um, to go over some of those details. He also just suggested that I get additional parking. I did reach out to the SSD on, on Restaurant, the owners are in agreement to allow us to use their parking lot during the day. I've also reached out to the VFW, I'm still waiting to hear back from them for, also for additional parking, to try to alleviate, alleviate some of the parking issues that we may have downtown, along with the ferry.
Excellent, excellent.
Melissa, this is, um, one other thing that has come up in, regarding another run that starts there, is, I don't know what time it's gonna start, but it is, okay?
It's at 10:00 AM, yeah, so the noise ordinance is 8:00 AM, we won't start anything until 9:00 AM, any, any announcers or anything until then, so we'll follow the noise ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, good luck.
Okay, so you may throw it in, thank you.
The next item, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is item G1A, and this is reappearance to the Wade Poise Trust. You have the, um, application of Brian Lefenwell currently serving, who would like to be reappointed.
Motion to reappoint Brian Lefenfield?
Second.
Lefenwell, sorry.
There's a motion and a second to reappoint, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next is the Board of Tenants Affairs, uh, you have two applicants seeking reappearance, Elizabeth Burns, 1014 Hope Street Apartment D2, and also Richard Hunter, uh, 1014 Hope Street E6. You have a new applicant, Frank Vento, of Apartment R, also has interest in serving on this board.
What's this council's pleasure?
I, uh, go ahead. Sorry, Mary, I thought you were jumping ahead.
I was pulling up the name.
A motion to reappoint Richard Hunter, and, uh, and we have an interest from Frank Vento, set up in a interview.
Elizabeth Burns is the reappearance.
Two, two reapport, two reapportment applica, applications and one new applicant.
And Lou, just remind this council, we do have a vacancy, is that correct? No? Okay.
Just amending my motion to reappoint Elizabeth Burns as well.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to reappoint, uh, both sitting members, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, the Christmas Festival Committee, you have the application of Jamie Chaplin, 67 Church Street, and the recommendation of the committee to, to appoint this individual.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to appoint, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is the point where this council says thank you to the boards and commissions for, uh, members of the boards and commissions for taking their time out of their daily lives to give back to the community. It does not go unnoticed and it does not go unappreciated, thank you. Mr. Clerk.
The next item is item I1, and this is communication from the Director of Community Development regarding the previously discussed grant for design and permitting of a bicycle path connector.
So, Diane, nothing changed on this, but it requires our action, is that correct?
Yes.
Could you do a 20-second commercial on this one?
I'd love to, so, the town was awarded a grant of $500,000 from the DEM as part of the Green Economy Bond, to look at a design, um, alternatives analysis, design and permitting of a bike path from Roger Williams University to the East Bay Bike Path. And, um, so you, we are asking you to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the grant agreement, which was reviewed and approved by the Town Solicitors Office.
Diane, remind everyone how much this cost the town directly, please.
Zero, there's zero match, there's no match.
Win-win, this is a great one. Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Diane, just one question, municipal resiliency grant, has that, anything, has that been submitted, or...
We, um, we have been selected to be a resilient roadie community in 2020.
That's what I thought I heard, and that's why I asked that.
Right, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Beautiful, it's quite a program, and yes, we got that too as well. So, we'll be in twins.
So, we have a motion and a...
I'm good, nothing, I was just gonna say, explain what that is, but, after, yeah.
We have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next meeting is fine.
The next item, I'm not sure is necessary, this was put on as a safety measure in case there was gonna be a need to speak about acquisition of property.
It is not necessary.
So, the motion would be to receive and file.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive and file, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Uh, the next item is placed on the agenda with the request of Councilwoman Perella regarding a contribution to the Gold Star Memorial at Rhode Island Veterans Cemetery.
So, um, it must've been on February 2nd, I think, because I, I wrote this the day after, um, there was a big fundraiser, as some of you may, may know, you may have gone to, at, um, the VFW in Bristol, uh, to help raise money for the Gold Star Family Memorial, uh, that they're trying to get built at the Veterans Cemetery in Exeter. And it was extremely well-attended, it was, you know, Lou was there, I don't know who else, may have gone at different times, I saw some of our, I saw Congressman Cicilline there, and I, and our two, um, you know, uh, the family of Sergeant McKenna and Michael Landreid were both very, very active, um, in selling tickets, getting the word out around town, and I saw it in our church bulletin numerous times, and also at the events, um, selling raffle tickets and everything else that they needed to do. And I, I thought, um, as I left there, you know, just like anything else, you're raising money for a good cause, doing it like a little at a time, and I thought, you know, we have been hit with, in recent years, and certainly, I'm sure, uh, there are many, many Gold Star families from past generations, and, um, unfortunately, I'm sure there'll be more in future generations, so I thought it was appropriate to make a donation, um, as a tribute to our Gold Star families from our community, uh, from our council contingency, to make sure this gets done. And I believe this is a move that, um, is going on in many states, not just in Rhode Island, um, but, you know, we've been really hit by this, so, and we've done a lot, so I would propose, um, a thousand dollar donation from our council contingency.
One thousand.
One?
One thousand.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to support the Gold Star Family Memorial with contribution of $1,000 from our council contingency, which we do have the funds available, is there any discussion?
I was just gonna ask, do we have, do we have it available?
Covered that base before, absolutely. So, all right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
May I ask, Lou, I, well, you were there, so you, I don't, I, I, we can look up on the website, or we can just contact one of the local people involved with this fundraising effort, to get the correct address of who to make out the check.
Absolutely.
And also, I would like to let, if you could just send a letter to them, to let them know that we, you know, are, are supporting their cause as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is presented by the Rodgetree Library Board of Trustees, this is their recently amended bylaws presented for council ratification.
Is anybody here?
Do we have representation from the library here? No? Okay.
So, this was, this is just passed on to us as pro forma, so to speak, right?
That's what's happened in the past, yes.
Yes, so I move that we adopt the bylaws of the Rodgetree Library, as, as they've made their changes. changes.
Has he had any major hiccups? I second that.
So we have a motion and a second. I'll just add a little piece is that we recently appointed a new trustee. Ruth Sudo is actually who it was. It's a great appointment. Proud to do so, and it's a great addition to the library. I did reach out to Betty Britto in regards to what I'd love, I wanted to have a conversation with her, excuse me, and she was quite amenable to it, that all applicants, we would know, this council knows the applicants that put their name forward. Right now, it has not been that practice. It's not a fault of anyone, including the library. I would just love us to know who is applying for these positions moving forward, and then ultimately, who they are recommending, and I mean, the Board of Trustees is recommending as their candidate. We have followed in the past, and I would imagine we would in the future, too. But I thought it was important that this council know who's putting their name forward. So, but that is not something that I'm suggesting needs to be changed in these bylaws. I just wanted to share that.
I certainly agree with you. Haven't lived through that position in the shoes of administrator. I'm sure you can appreciate the fact, you know, sometimes they forget, even though they have an advisory board and so forth, it's very much appreciated, their efforts, but sometimes it goes, tried to skate a bit under the radar, and I think it's good to have, you know, the ratification of those appointments.
Perfect.
I just wanted to ask, Lou, do you, this is a little off the subject, so maybe you should just vote. I just want to, isn't there like a thing this weekend of their teen space? Is that this weekend or is that down the road?
Oh, look, I, we all got an email. So, we did get an email on that.
Yeah, if somebody can just mention that, maybe.
Certainly, we'll hit it at the end.
Sunday, the 23rd.
Sunday, the 23rd.
I think it's 1:00.
So it'll be this upcoming Sunday, then.
We'll reference that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the Board of Trustees bylaws presented to the council, for we'll actually ratify it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item are the bills and expenditures. We have two bids today. The first is bid 921, and this is for the transfer station, solid waste, special waste area, and recycling hall and contract. You have two bids provided. The first is from RMT Excavating of Warren in the amount of $3,945, and the second is from Sweet Enterprises Incorporated of West Greenwich in the amount of $239,110. Obviously, the, there's quite a discrepancy between the two, and it appears as though there was, might have been a misunderstanding as to how the bid amount was to be expressed. So obviously, the council usually sends these for the administrator to work in the best interests of the town. Someone would have to obviously check the bids carefully to be assured that apples were being compared to apples.
Mr. Chairman, based on the clerk's comments, I'll make a motion to refer this to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town and to look into the discrepancy.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mary, I know you were, did you want to share something else there? No, it's the, the microphone wasn't picking it up that much.
No, 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 I just, it's like somebody like probably had, I think they had the decimal point in the wrong places.
They're missing zeros.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the second is bid 921.
Sir?
My name is Peter Sweet. I'm the owner of Sweet Enterprises. I've been doing the job for almost seven years now. I'd like to point out that due to this bid...
Can you just stop, just for one second? Just one moment. Mr. Solicitor, I just want to make sure that we're not out of order here. Could you, is this...
Yeah, I do think it probably would be best not to get into it in public. I mean, there's a bid. It was opened in public. We have it. It's been referred to the solicitor, well, it's been referred to the administrator, rather. And I think it would be premature at this time to be talking about it.
Okay. I apologize for that I'm going to follow legal advice on this. Mr. Administrator, go ahead.
What I typically, for a case that doesn't involve an engineering company, I would seek the guidance of the solicitor. So if Mr. Sweet would like to meet with me and the solicitor, that'd be probably the first step.
Thank you.
If there's a grievance with this.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I just, if I can, I want to go on.
No, actually, you can, because I, we have legal advice not to do so, and Mr., wait, you're, you need to stop.
You didn't get...
You need to stop, please.
Before you vote.
I'm going to, I'm going to say it one more time, but you can, sir, you can stay right there for a moment, and I will check with the solicitor if you'd like me to. Thank you. Mr. Solicitor.
Yes, I would renew my advice that the council not get into it at this time. You haven't taken action. You haven't denied the bids. You haven't awarded the bids. You've referred it to the town administrator, and I think that these gentlemen, together with assistants in the solicitor's office, will be talking to the administrator rather than the council.
Okay.
Could I just say that this is what we do in every single bid that we get? We refer it to the administrator in the appropriate department. We don't...
To act in the best interests of the town.
Again, I am not here.
So I'm going to, I apologize.
These two bids.
I stopped, I'm going to, I'm going to stop you right there. I apologize. But what you can do, you have an opportunity to reach out, and we ask that you do, to the administrator and the solicitor. And if there's action that this council needs to take, and we're going to stop right here, if there's action this council needs to take, we could certainly add it to our next agenda. Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, we also have bid 923, and this is for the Independence Park seawall improvements. We have seven bids received. We have a bid from Sumco Echo Contracting LLC of Peabody, Massachusetts, in the amount of $273,200. Second from Kavanaugh Marine of Little Compton in the amount of $560,250. The third from RMT Excavation of Warren, Rhode Island, in the amount of $72,200. The fourth from JML Excavation of Bristol in the amount of $169,793,000. And the, excuse me, $793,000. And New England Building and Bridge Company of Providence in the amount of $324,100. The sixth from Bosa Lee Brothers of Cranston in the amount of $351,300. And the final from Jackavone Construction Corporation of Johnston in the amount of $318,800.
There is a massive difference in these numbers.
Motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interests of the town.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the periodic report provided by Alan Klepper, Barrington Director of the Bristol County Water Authority and also chairman.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
I, I'm sorry, I have to stop here and just say, 10% increase?
I know. I know, I was just going to go.
I'm going to, I'm going to keep this really small and tight. There was so much conversation 10 plus, eight-plus years ago about horrible increases. We needed to get rid of all of these people, and nothing but increases since that point. We don't produce water anymore. We're trying to sell, at least my understanding, all that we own over there, and only rates increasing 10% this year. Can you imagine if this council and this, well, I'll tell you what, I'll start with the administrator. If the administrator came to this council and said, "I'm suggesting we should have a 10% increase in our budget this year." Are you kidding me? I don't know how to say that nicely, so that's, excuse me, but that's just crazy. So, what's this council's pleasure? We just need to receive and file, quite honestly.
Right. Again, just a motion to receive and file.
Reduction. Yep. All right, so we have a motion to receive and file. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion besides my little rant there? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next comes the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
So, real quickly, first, if you haven't seen the signs around town that have come up in the last 24 hours or so, March 2nd starts the one-way, or one lane, if you will, on the Silver Creek Bridge. I'm going to take a moment and thank the administrator again. The administrator and I spent an inordinate amount of time on the request of local businesses and residents, and then, of course, our own actions, along with other from the town, to make sure that that stayed open. There was an immense amount of effort put into that. Since that time and through that time, the DOT and local representation of the DOT has been nothing but outstanding. They've made some massive improvements on Medicom Avenue. If you notice the cameras on the lights, we'll just bring this up one more time, those are not speed camera lights. Those are, so the lights know that you're there, and they change accordingly. So the timing will continue to adjust with the traffic flow, and DOT will be on that to make sure that those things happen accordingly. So let's go back. Silver Creek Bridge will go down to one lane starting on March 2nd. That means a southbound lane going into town is how you do that, and when leaving, there will be clear denoted route to get back onto Medicom Ave. Now, if you live around here, and you do, then you're going to quickly figure out what is best route for you. So whatever that means to you, you will, you will do that quite quickly. The benefit here is that we have emergency access that we weren't going to have before. Police, fire, rescue are going to be able to access that, and the schools, the administrator brought that one in particular, but I know we're all concerned about this. Gitterer School, issues over there, being able to access that is just outstanding. That'll be worked on and through a little bit before the 4th of July, I'm going to ballpark and say the second week of June. It'll open back up to two lanes again. It'll look like mostly not touched. There'll be a red, white, and blue line down the middle. We'll have our parade. The next day, they'll start work again and be completed in the fall. So a lot of, a lot of effort and energy went in. I know the chief was at a meeting earlier today with DOT to give updates on that, but I wanted everybody to know that it is going along. Yes, there are going to be backups there. Yes, there's going to be challenges, but the access will still be there. Our merchants downtown were very concerned about that. Obviously, the residents were, too, and those things are going to continue. So we'll have that access there. The other thing I wanted to say was Bristol Yacht Club is open again. Remember the fire they had over a year ago? They had the rededication on Sunday, and it looks beautiful. It's another wonderful venue for a multitude of people, weddings, such and so forth. And if you are a member there, it was, there was a lot of effort that they put in, a lot of people gave their time, effort, and energy, and it looks outstanding. So congratulations to all. Thanks, everyone.
So sometimes, even though it was a terrible fire, positive came out of it, at least, you know what I mean? So, yeah, well said.
I mentioned Ruth Sudo as being appointed to the Roger Williams, excuse me, Rogers Free Library Board of Trustees. She was the commodore at the time, and they gave her a plaque that said, "During the fire years," is what she got on it, so. But she did an outstanding job, so, again, nice job.
Mr. Sweeney?
I just wanted to salute, give a salute to the veteran, Mr. Kirby. In the recent article in the Bristol Phoenix, you may have all seen it, it was on the cover. I just thought it was very inspirational. Despite all his physical challenges, he invented a trade to help other people. And you know what? His spirit symbolizes strength, and when things get tough, he doesn't quit. So I just thought it was a nice inspirational story, that you always got to make sure you keep going, even when it gets tough out there, just keep going. And Mary, happy birthday, happy belated birthday, and wish you many more.
Happy birthday.
Yeah. Sad to say, in almost eight years, I'll be missing the first council meeting on March 11th. I'll be down in Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia, on business, but, Mr. Chairman, hopefully there's nothing too controversial at the March 11th.
As far as I know, there is something coming up on the next one. Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, moving on. Finally, I'm looking forward to the upcoming JFC and budget. I'm hoping, hoping we can all work together for a balanced budget, which positions us for strong growth and prosperity for the future. So have a good night. Thank you.
Mr. Texera.
The first notice would be condolences to Artisus's family, the all-time firefighter, close to be 101, I believe. He was short three weeks of being 101. So it's outstanding. And that's not to be, nevertheless, many other folks who we've lost recently. Looking through the websites, it's just amazing, the website, the funeral palace, that is, amazing how many folks we've lost, you know, and many others. So condolences to all of those folks and their family, our prayers with their families. One particular item, and please weigh in on this, Chief, this has to do in very recent , not here in Bristol, so I don't want to alert anybody, but there has been a senior scam where folks have been going, reaching out to seniors. In one particular case, the, this individual was called and was told that the daughter was arrested. He would have to come up with some cash pretty quick. So he actually was in the process of going to the bank to do that until somebody sort of slipped, no, nobody slipped, but somebody made him aware, says, "Listen, you need to contact the police," and he did. He contacted the police in that community, and a lot has come about from that particular matter. I cannot expand on that, but I can tell you, so my warning is to all our seniors, please be careful. If you get a call and you suspect something, the place to call is call our police department. Have, have one of our officers visit with you. Listen to the phone call, you know, if you can record it, let it go to the voicemail if possible, and in some way, record the conversation. It would be very important. But I, you know, just caution you to be very careful. Don't give up all the earnings that you've worked so hard for to some, you know, some person out there, you know, that you don't even know on the other end of the phone. So that's my saying there. So, thank you.
Ms. Pirella.
I don't have too much, but I just want to read a report Tony brought up. I mean, not just that particular scam, but, you know, if you spend any time at home, you're just inundated with calls, and it is, you know, social security, like, somebody called me about a social security issue, sounds very official. I said to them, "You're not even calling from a Washington area code." You know what I mean? Like, this is, like, you are so ridiculous. Nobody's going to be calling for this, and, but there are people that don't know that, and they get scared when they hear it. And, you mean, that's, that's one thing I wish Congress could address. I mean, and it's long overdue. So, and I know we're talking about good things that go on in town, and I just want to mention, it was a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago now, but, you know, the robotics team at the high school, and I'm sure at Kikumweit as well, this has been robotic season, and the end of the, the season pretty much in Rhode Island has ended as of the 8th, I think it was, that weekend, and then the team just went up, the Mount Hope team just went up to Vermont to compete there this past weekend. I don't know that they're, I don't know that any, that they've earned a place in the Nationals, but it is such a great experience for all the kids that are involved, and they learn so much. And it's not just the engineering and exposure to engineers and programming and so forth, but all the other skills that employers are looking for in terms of, you know, what some might call soft skills, but, you know, how to solve a problem solving, and how to work together as a team, and how to think through solutions, a lot of very important things. So I think we just always kind of forget about that unless they've been in front of us, because they are going to the Nationals and looking for funding, but it's something that we should all support out there, because it's an awesome, I think they have several teams at Mount Hope, and all great kids that I have been involved with that I've seen around the state, so.
Mary, you asked, the library has the grand opening for the teen space at Rogers Free Library on Sunday, the 23rd, so this Sunday at 2:00 p.m.
At 2:00 p.m., okay.
2:00 p.m.
There you go. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mary.
Thank you. This is a while ago now.
Mr. Lay.
No one's asked me my new age, though, thank God, because I haven't had to say it publicly.
Well, I don't have much. We have budget coming up, and, and so we're going to be doing a lot of talking over here, and I'll probably be doing my fair share of talking, too, when it comes to budget time, just as everybody else. And so I'm looking forward to that, taking a nice, hard look at that budget again. Just some other great announcements. I know that the ferry season's coming up. We've been, we've been talking about it. I was talking to Chris about it when I got in here. to Chris about it when I got in here. I was getting super excited about it. I think it starts after Memorial Day. Is that, is that right?
Yeah.
Somewhere around there. We'll, we'll figure that out, and we'll make sure that everybody knows about that. But we'll see, the DOT will have their signs out like they have in the past, the big overhead highway signs that say that the Bristol Newport Ferry is coming this season. I saw in an email that they sent that they'll be doing that. And then there'll be fixed blue signs in downtown Providence for all those bikers to drive by and see that, yes, indeed, it's not just the Newport Ferry, it's the Bristol and Newport Ferry. So, very excited to hear that. Otherwise, that's about it, and stay safe.
Town administrator, agenda items.
Thank you. First, I have a message from Chief Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. To address the concerns of Councilman Texera and Councilperson Perella, the chiefs met this week on their monthly meeting at the Cranston Police Station with the Attorney General, and part of this month's topic is senior awareness on some of these issues that they're targeting our seniors.
Thank you.
So just prior to coming to the council meeting, I alerted our social media sergeant and one of our clerks. So you will be, see this week, we'll be pushing out through social media the alerts and the attentions for people to educate their elders. So we're gonna be pushing out a lot of social media updates, alerts, and I'm gonna be coming out with, just so it's not every time that there's an issue, I want to come up with static alerts that will go out on a monthly, quarterly, and a yearly basis. So we'll have a calendar and keep refreshing everybody and keep their, keep them concerned about those particular issues, not to scare them, but to educate people. And we don't want to just do it once because it, no, we know it continues. Also, I want to give a thanks to Bristol Prevention Coalition, who's funding a TIP 411. You'll see it in a lot of other communities where people can, through social media, can alert the police to concerns in our school districts, and also in the community. So it's gonna be a new tool of technology that we'll be rolling out at the PD, and we'll be pushing that out, alerting through the Bristol Phoenix and through our social media webpages. And as the chairperson alerted about the Silver Creek Bridge, we did meet there today, and both on the town and the police department website, the administrator has asked that we put up a traffic plan and a link to DOT's website, and a phone number for any businesses or people that have concerns about the traffic route. There'll also be that information. So Steve has asked that we get all of that information out, along with the council chairman, so that we get the communications about what the actual route will be, what the paths will be with the signage, and we will have detail, additional detailed offices, which we pay for by DOT, to help educate the public and steer them in the right direction.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Just a couple of items. CRMC is accepting public comments for the mariner expansion, and also the fuel station, which would be located at the State Street dock. Seawall bids are in, response, responses are in, which is, nice to see, that's Independence Park seawall repair. DPW have been training with the new equipment, so they're on track and on target. And all worthwhile investment projects for a, for a good future. And the last thing I'd like to say is I believe that Puxa, the, the groundhog, Puxa...
Puxa Tony Phil.
Puxa Tony Phil. He did, did not see a shadow, so it sounds like it's gonna be an early spring. So we should be okay with our snow removal budget.
So far.
Hopefully.
So far.
So I have. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Administrator, to your point, the comments that they accept, are they gonna be local, or do you...
They, CRMC meets in Wickford, right? Not Wickford, Wakefield.
Oh, so it'll be at their office.
So there's, what we'll do is we'll post online their address. It's typically, they take written comments first, but then there is a, there is a hearing, but you have to put in your written comments ahead of time. It's the CRMC, Coastal Resource Management Council, and DEM. So we are looking for pro and con, those in favor, and those that may be against. We like to hear it. So, but I think it's definitely gonna benefit us as far as revenues coming in, other than property taxes. We're gonna have visiting boaters come in, transits, 20 additional transient slips. We'll be one of the few fuel stations in Narragansett Bay, so we're anticipating that this will be some good revenues for us, for us all, all residents. So I have, thanks.
So we do not have executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good night, everyone.